Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting. We have a quorum, but one of our members, there he is. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And if I could turn on to Vice Chair Betty Jenkins to open us up, please.
If you can please stand for the pledge at the ward for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are now at the naming or renaming of facilities. As a nomination to name the baseball field at Western Guilford High School's Brett Stell Stadium. So we're going to open up our public hearing. If there are people here in support of the recommendation, we'll hear from you first. You will have five minutes. If there are people here that are opposed or have another recommendation, we will, you will have five minutes and we will hear from you as well. So is there anyone present that wants to speak in favor of this nomination? All right, is there anyone here in opposition of this recommendation? All right, well then I will close the public hearing and turn this over to, oh, she's not here. So let's see, we will read the information that we have here. Okay. You want to do that? I'll turn to Board Member Betty Jenkins.
I make a motion to name the baseball field, Western Guilford High School Brett Stell Stadium, the Chris Coughley Field.
Any discussion? All right, Board Members, please use your devices to vote. Looking at my name. All right, that passes unanimously, seven to zero. We are now at the consent agenda. Board Member Welburn did ask that Item A, the budget amendment transfers be pulled for review. So we will be voting on B and C. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Oakley?
Sure. Today's consent agenda includes, A, the budget amendment transfer report, the contractual agreement with H.M. Kern Corporation for Construction Services for the Smith High School Career and Technical Education Project, and lastly, the shared use agreement annual renewal between the City of Greensboro and the Guilford County Board of Education. And that concludes today's consent agenda for the board's consideration.
Thank you for Items B and C. Diane, how do you vote? Chrissy? Linda? Betty?
Yes.
Bill? And Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. So B and C pass unanimously, seven to zero, and I will turn to Ms. Welburn.
Again, apologize for the dress. I had told Lisa this was going to push me, and it definitely did. Went to a tiebreaker, so. Of course. So what I want is some clarification. The page, is it page seven? Because I'm going to do them, I think. Nutrition, is that? Is that a seven? What page is that?
Four.
Four. Page four. You've got nutrition, we had an increase on that. 560?
Yes, this is not the school nutrition fund. This is within the federal grant fund, and that should be from an ESER strategy.
Okay.
Where funds were transferred to meet some of the objectives of the nutrition strategy. I think it was to continue the bonuses that they had previously been funded from other ESER funds to complete this year.
Okay. On the capital budget, we're switching 10 million from category one to category two. What's that mean?
Yes, ma'am. So when we received project ordinance revision approval for the 2022 bond funds to allow us to begin the funds, in October, you recorded a budget amendment, and the budget was kind of spread between the categories. Things that would fall in 9100 would be the architect work, design work. 9200 would be more things like furniture and equipment and the fixtures in the building as we progressed and realized that we needed to make a correction because we have to spend the 9100 funds first. So this is for the 2022 bond projects. It's just writing it so we could release the purchase orders for the project management and the architect work that occurs.
You're taking, or we have a reduction in alternative programs and services of 212. What is that? Where's that money coming from? Seven. Like I said, I was in a little rush, so they're all out of order.
Yes, so that's co-curricular. That, again, is another correction with athletic participation revenue. That is treating it up for last year's carryover and the anticipated revenue that was to be received this year.
Okay. What is the GCS Alternative Certification Track ACT program?
This is the teacher program that come in, used to be called lateral entry, I believe. There may be someone else that would like to address that in more depth.
You're right, it's the GCS ACT program where we're able to license teachers in order to have them be in the classroom.
Okay, what is the Gear Up Grant?
The Gear Up Grant is in middle schools. I'm going to need somebody to help me with that one, though. Chris Tolliver, you're a good brief summary of the Gear Up Grant, brief. Mike, turn the mic on. Good job.
No, this is not me. Hey, it's the Grant Partnership with Winston-Salem State University, gaining early awareness for students in select middle schools, six of them, for post-secondary experiences.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
Okay, page, what's the page?
Eight.
Eight of eight. I can kind of make out the typing, but it gets real difficult. What, the Bryan Foundation, that is money coming in, correct?
That's for principal coaching, to bring in retirees to coach new principals.
Okay, thank you. And guess what? Wait, make sure. Oh, I got one more. I said I got other sheets here. Co-curricular special. On page three of eight. I know, I'm all over because, like I said, they got shuffled. Policy Leadership and Public Relations Services, 26.4,000. What is that?
That I do not have at the detail level, that I can tell you exactly what that is, but I could get that information for you. The policy leadership, public relations category includes the board, the leadership level expenses, and it's a transfer. It's not an amendment, so it's where someone moved within their budget from one of the other categories to the policy leadership. But we could get the details.
Okay, we removed on children with special needs. We transferred 592, almost 593,000 dollars. But did we replace that somewhere, or what's the deal?
That's actually a reduction in the allotment, and it is for charter school in the exceptional children's area. The state changed our allocation and took back 592,000. In the federal budget amendment, however, we did receive for other purposes a additional federal exceptional children allocation that's similar amount. So we were able to-
Right, that's what I saw.
Help offset with that, yes.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
All right, is there-
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so Item A passes unanimously. We're now- Bill? Okay, great. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Oakley for a presentation of the superintendent's budget.
Thank you. This afternoon, we will discuss the 2324 budget for Guilford County Schools as the board considers this year's budget resolution. As a reminder, this is our first go at this, and then we'll have the hearing and the vote on the budget. So we do have Michael Leclair, Senior Executive Director of Human Resources Operations, Tara Trexler, CFO, and Jose Oliva, Chief of Staff, who are going to help with this afternoon's budget presentation. We'll begin by aligning the budget with what we're hearing around the strategic direction as we've listened to community members. We'll then move into the economic context and the overview just to understand how public school funding works, including our current staffing numbers. This will be followed by an update on current salary schedules for classified staff and the salary study that we've been talking about for some time. And then finally, we'll close out with an update on our ESER spending before presenting the final 2324 budget. So that's kind of the order that we'll go in, and I will go ahead and share with, in terms of the alignment with the strategic direction. I've shared with the board that we've been listening to the community and having conversations, and this year's budget is aligned to what we're hearing in terms of the better-together community conversations that we had in the fall. We asked the community a series of questions that really was to reflect on where the district has been and where we are now and where we're headed to determine a shared vision for the future of Guilford County Schools. We are still finalizing the strategic direction, but what is clear are these focus areas. They're not just our district priorities, but they're what the community has said and has highlighted, and they won't be new to you. But they start with the recruitment, retention, and rewarding of top talent, accelerating learning, making sure our schools are safe and healthy places to work and learn, and making sure that students are prepared for the future. Today, we will primarily be focusing on the very first area, that's recruiting, retaining, and rewarding top talent and the budget implications for that. Before we get started, it's important to think about the economic context, so I'll turn to Mr. Oliva for this piece.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley, and Board Members, all of you have invitations to the Strategic Direction launch that you can share in the community when we finally announce and unveil the final draft of the strategic direction. For the economic context, a few things to keep in mind of what's happening, not just in North Carolina, but also around the country, is that unemployment is at an all-time low. So there are more people working, more people in the labor market, which makes it a little bit more difficult to hire new people because it's a very competitive market. So we have a 3.6 unemployment rate in February. Earlier in the year, many of you saw the news that a lot of school districts struggled to hire enough teachers by the first day of school. You know, here you can see some examples where, I mean, some districts had, you know, Charlotte had 341 vacancies by August 22nd, and then, you know, there were other places like Chapel Hill, Carboro with almost 100. So, you know, the market is difficult right now, and we're also seeing it in other sectors. So there are not enough plumbers, enough age-back specialists or drivers, and it's happening all over in different sectors. Something used to remind the board of is, you know, when the state tried to address this issue, they created a $100 million state teacher supplement that was given to different counties with the exception of four counties, Wake County, Durham, Maclinburg, and Guilford. And, you know, part of the argument was that there might be enough resources in that community for that, those dollars to come from the local budgets. But one thing that we have learned is that, you know, Guilford County is just not the same than the other counties. We have specific challenges that are unique to us. One of them being that, you know, we have a higher child poverty rate than the state, than Wake, than Maclinburg, and Durham counties. You know, when it comes to food insecurity, we have a higher rate than State, Maclinburg, Forsyth, and Durham counties. And we also have a lower median family income. And many of our employees are navigating the same challenges that, you know, we have listed here. So it's a difficult time, and other counties are receiving some help, but no Guilford County. So if you look at Forsyth County, for example, is, that's a good example. They are getting some funds, you know, Allemans County, Randolph, but no Guilford County. And here's just an example of how other districts are reacting. You know, in the case of Wake County, they are saying, well, we're going to invest more dollars from our local budget to help teachers. One thing they're trying to bring back this year is the master pay piece that the state took away a few years ago. I know the state is reconsidering adding that into their strategies as well. You know, Durham Public Schools also increased the number of dollars going into the, the number of dollars going into their, from their local fund to their budget to help with teacher supplements. And then there are other districts that are also just, you know, going above and beyond. Carboro, Chapel Hill, Carboro City Schools increased their hourly rate for bus drivers. You might recall that at the peak of Omicron, we were running with one-third of our bus drivers. This has an impact on, you know, bus drivers running double routes. It has an impact on whether some students might be able to participate in after-school activities. So there are districts like Chapel Hill, Carboro that are increasing the market rate, which puts us in a disadvantage if we don't keep up with it. Of course, you know, you have heard this multiple times because of our construction projects, but inflation has been increasing, even though it has gone down over the last few months. You know, it has been really high for several year, for several months now. And, you know, something that is, you know, easy to understand if you go to the grocery store or if you're doing, you know, a project at home is that things cost more now than they did in 2019. So our employees are seeing that impact in navigating these economic challenges. And of course, you know, we have seen all these vacancies, and, you know, we know one team works. If you pay people, they come. And, you know, the county is a good example of this. Last year, they took a comprehensive approach where they did a compensation study, and they have about 2,000 employees, is what I understand. And, you know, it cost them about $20 million to bring their employees to market. And I think that you're also seeing other entities do the same thing. The Greensboro Police Department did something similar recently. So this is part of what we're going to discuss today is, you know, how do we make sure that we have enough bus drivers, enough age-back specialists, enough plumbers, maintenance staff, but that we also keep the teachers in Guilford County as we're competing with other school districts? So now I'm going to pass it to my colleague Tara Trexler.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members. GCS does have nearly 10,000 employees, with the majority of our employees being teachers and classified staff. But before we look further into the Guilford County Schools budget, let's first take a look at some other numbers that reflect how large and complex our organization is. So with 68,000 students and nearly 10,000 employees, GCS is the third-largest school district in the state and 50th in the nation. GCS has 126 schools and 300-plus buildings. Our students speak more than 100 languages. GCS is responsible for maintaining more than 12 million in square feet in buildings and 3,000 acres of property. During the 2020-21 school year, when students were not in the buildings due to the pandemic, GCS completed more than 25,000 work orders. The average GCS school was built more than six decades ago before the moon landing and the invention of the Internet. As mentioned earlier, Guilford faces some unique economic challenges. 63% of students live in poverty, and more than 2,500 students are homeless. We cannot ignore that such factors have an impact on student performance. We also have 9,500 students who receive special education services and 14,000 who receive gifted services. 41.9% of our students are black and nearly 20% are Hispanic. We remain one of the largest employers in the region. It's important to note that we also have experienced teachers. Most teachers in the classroom have three or more years of experience. However, it is becoming increasingly more challenging to attract people to teaching. Yet, when we're able to recruit them, GCS does a good job of keeping them. GCS has one of the lowest teacher attrition rates among some of the largest school districts in the state. We have committed teachers who stay longer. Now, we would like to provide a brief overview of school funding. The exciting part. Article 9, Section 2 of the North Carolina Constitution directs the General Assembly to provide a general and uniform system of free public schools. If other states, that local boards of commissioners may add to or supplement schools with that local revenue. North Carolina General Statute 115(c) is specific to elementary and secondary education, and Section 108(b) under the Fiscal Affairs section indicates the state intended that state funds be used for instructional expenses for current operations. If other states, that facility requirements will be met by local county governments. So many factors affect budget development each year. Normally, salary increases for teachers, other licensed staff, principals, assistant principals, and classified employees are decisions made at the state level. But the local budget must accommodate the mandated increases for locally paid employees. Employer taxes on wages and employer-paid insurance premiums must be provided for those locally paid employees as well. Annual increases for utility, energy, gas, diesel fuel costs, as well as various risk management areas should also be included. And additional operating costs associated with the construction program and student enrollment, including those at charter schools, are also commonly included increases. So based on data in the North Carolina Public Schools statistical profile, Guilford County's per-pupil local appropriation ranking slid from 11th back in 2012-13 to 13th by 21-22 school year. This chart shows the local per-pupil appropriation amount for the highest 15-ranked districts in 21-22 and their corresponding per-pupil appropriation amount back in school year 2012-13. North Carolina continues to be behind in teacher pay compared to the nation as businesses continue to consider North Carolina. This is an important metric for consideration. In 2021-22, Guilford was ranked ninth in North Carolina for teacher supplements and dropped to 11th in 22-23. Currently, Guilford County has seen recent economic growth with the addition of Boom Supersonic and Toyota coming to our community. As we continue to try to recruit businesses to Guilford County, we want to demonstrate a strong teacher pipeline and investments in public education. We are also facing challenges recruiting classified staff. As you look at some of the jobs with the highest vacancy rates in the district, this is not new information to us. We have been talking about these hard-to-fill positions for some time now. At this time, Michael Leclair, our Senior Executive Director of HR Operations, will now share some additional information regarding classified salaries.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members. So as we've mentioned, we've completed a salary study. But I'd like to begin by talking about our current salary schedules and their structure and some of the challenges that those are giving us in terms of recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff. So our current structure is based on grades and steps. We have 30 grades, and each grade is, each job is placed on a grade. A grade is what classifies that job in terms of its scope and its impact. Each, each grade currently has 54 steps. A step is equivalent to a year of experience. Our practice has been each year to add an additional step. So if this practice is continued, next year, we will have 55 steps for each one of our grades. Our current grade structure is based on the Department of Public Instruction's job classifications. The Department of Public Instruction for each grade gives us a minimum and a maximum, and then we develop our schedules within those. One of the issues that we've been having with our salary schedules is compression. And this compression occurs within a grade and across grades. So for example, in this graph, you can see that grade 54, an employee on grade 54, and this would include our custodians, our teacher assistants, they do not receive an increase in their hourly wage until they have reached 32 years of experience with the district. It's essentially flat. That's what we refer to as step compression, meaning that across years of experience, we're not seeing increases in hourly wages. We also have in our current salary schedule structure an issue with what we'd call grade compression. So looking at this graph again, you see that for many years, across different grades, employees are making the same hourly wage. A good example of this is with our custodians. Our lead custodians are on grade 57. And there are lead custodians supervise other custodians who are on grade 54. There are cases in our district in which a lead custodian may have 20 years of experience and be supervising custodians who have no years of experience or two years of experience. These employees all earn the same hourly wage in our current salary schedule structure. This, of course, provides a great challenge in recruiting and retaining employees and finding employees who are willing to take on jobs of higher responsibility. This is the reason why, what, some of the reasons why we started this salary study, to look at ways of creating a salary schedule structure that would be more beneficial to our employees and help us to recruit and retain. So within the, the scope of that salary study, we wanted to make sure that we had a good understanding of our, our current job responsibilities for our employees and also to, to determine what would be equitable market values for that work. And then develop a, a strategy and a structure to put this into place for our employees. We worked with an organization, Kushner Employer Services, to, to help us in this process. What was done was they worked with our employees and their supervisors to look at what truly was the scope and responsibility of each job. And new job profiles were created to reflect that. We wanted to make sure that that was understood first so that we could accurately give a market value for that job. So once these job profiles were completed, this was through a process of interviews with employees, focus groups, surveys, and the job profiles were updated, salary ranges were determined for each job based on market values. Once these ranges were determined, an analysis was conducted to group these jobs into grades based on market values. The structure that was used was to- The structure that was used was to reduce the current number of grades from 30 to 18, more in line with best practices in industry. Also, as well as reducing the number of grades, we wanted to make sure that employees had a natural career progression as well. Our current system, as I mentioned, has 54 steps in it. And we may be adding an additional step this year if we maintain the same salary schedule structure. The new approach would have 30 steps, and it would be fixed at 30 steps. No additional steps would be added. This allows an employee to reach their maximum earning potential within a, what we refer to as a natural career of, of 30 years. So those are some of the structural changes that, that are recommended. What we're hoping through these proposed salary schedule restructurings is that we have meaningful differences in pay rates for employees across grades. So if an employee does become a lead custodian, they will be rewarded for that, and they will have a higher pay rate than those that they would supervise. We also wanted to make sure that employees were being rewarded for years of experience as they became more skilled in their jobs, that they would be compensated for that appropriately. So that each year, there would be some increase in their hourly wage that reflects their experience in that job with the district. Also, by going to market rates, our hope is to be much more competitive in recruiting and retaining talent that we need to run our operations. You know, we, we have to compete with private sector for many of the types of jobs that we are hiring for, electricians, HVAC. And so we have to be competitive with the wider labor market in our area. So by adjusting our salary schedules to reflect these market value ranges, we can better recruit in some of these critical operational areas. Through this process, we've come to propose three models for how these salary schedules could be structured. We have a matched market based on the market values that were developed by Cushion for us last year, which has a 5% difference between each grade and a 1.5% difference between each step. Model B, which is what we're calling a head-of-market, is similar to Model A, except that we have a 6% difference between grades, but maintains the 1.5% difference between steps. And then Model C, our market leader model, which also has a 6% difference between grades, but has a 2.5% difference between steps. And as you can see in the slide, they have the costs associated with each one of those models. Each one of these models would affect all of our classified employees, our non-licensed employees, of which we have roughly 3,900 in the district that would be placed within this new structure. And I will turn it over to Parat Trexler at this point.
Okay, so now we'll share a brief update on the COVID-19 relief funds. So, in March 2020, the district meant to outline a plan of how federal relief funds would be utilized to most impact student success. Our investment areas included the basics at that point, like PPE, student computers and devices for remote learning, and student nutrition and connectivity at the beginning of the pandemic, to ongoing efforts to address the effects of the pandemic by funding staff recruitment and retention incentives for these hard-to-fill areas, mental health supports, increased access to summer learning programming and investments in instructional resources to ensure our teachers had what they needed to address learning loss. Federal relief funds came to the district in three main waves. S.R. 1, also known as the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Then we received S.R. 2, which was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations. And then S.R. 3, which is also known as the American Rescue Plan Act. Each bucket of funds had a different date when the district has to fully encumber the funds. S.R. 1 or CARES funds were available through this past September and have been fully spent. S.R. 2 funds are available through this September 2023 and are 96% spent to date, with a little less than 3.6 million remaining. Plans are in place to have these funds fully expended by the end of June. This will leave the S.R. 3 funds remaining for the district to encumber and expend throughout the course of the 2023-24 school year. We currently have 39% of the funds spent, and staff are on track to have funds fully encumbered by September 2024. So now we'll share the 23-24 Superintendent's Budget Recommendation. Back at the beginning of today's presentation, Jose shared one of our four top priorities highlighted in our community was recruiting, retaining, and rewarding top talent. And we'll return to that priority in the budget recommendation. We are navigating a competitive market, competing for talent with the private sector, other school districts, and government agencies, just to name a few. Guilford County funded $8 million of a $10 million request in 21-22 for the first phase of the supplement increase. The Board of Education, again in 22-23, requested $10 million, and commissioners were able to provide the full $10 million for the second phase. This year, the superintendent's request includes the additional $10 million to continue the efforts to improve the GCS supplement ranking for teachers. As efforts to increase teacher compensation continue, we also recognize that it takes more than teachers to support the education of our students. Almost 40% of the positions required to run our schools do not require an educational license. These positions are known as the classified staff positions and were the focus of the information shared by Michael. Significant pressure from labor shortages led to the need for the market alignment of the classified staff salaries and the review of the compression issues within our existing salary sca, excuse me, existing salary schedules and require adjustments to the classified position salaries. To support Model A, bringing GCS classified salaries up to market rate, the 23-24 request for county funding based on the Classified Compensation Study is $32 million. By nature of their funds, enterprise programs, such as our School Nutrition and After-School ACEs program, are responsible for providing the revenue to fund their expenditures and have not been included. So that's the difference in the $38 million on the prior slide and the $32 million that would be included in the requests to the commissioners. Teacher supplements and adjustments to classified staff compensation bring the employee compensation requests to $42 million. So as we move to the next components included in our superintendent's local request, the remainder of the items are more of the mandatory items. So, with legislative impacts, in this first year of the state's biennial budget, the legislative impact of salary increases are, of course, unknown at this time. For purposes of this budget request, the increase needed for locally funded staff is currently projected at an average of 5% for all categories of employees, equating to a $4.18 million increase for the locally paid positions. Benefit rates are also expected to increase again this year, and the retirement rate is projected to increase from 24.5% in the current year to 25.4% in 23-24. That's an increase of 3.6%. Hospitalization rates, or the insurance rate, is projected at a 4.1% increase, going from the current $7,397 per employee to $7,700 per employee. That's the employer-paid premium. For locally funded staff, the projected retirement increase will cost an additional $1 million, and the hospitalization insurance increase will require an additional $220,000. For an employee earning $45,000 in salary, benefits at these projected rates will exceed 50% of the employee compensation. We've been watching that trend increase over the years, but we, it will now exceed 50% of their salary, the benefits of a $45,000 salary employee. So in total, the benefit rates will cost $1,200, I'm sorry, $1.25 million in additional local funds. For sustaining operational costs, charter schools are expected to increase by 1,363 students, which would require a $12.27 million increase to pass through the proportionate per-student amount of this local budget request. The growth in charter students, before considering any increased funding to support GCS, requires $5 million based on the student enrollment changes alone. The additional $7 million is related to maintaining that proportionate distribution of pass-through funding to charters as we achieve market rate adjustments to the GCS salary schedules. Fund legislative increases for our locally paid staff and the other operations we'll talk about for sustaining. Utilities are included at a projected increase of 15% or $2.65 million for next year. And liability insurance continues to climb, and we are budgeting another $300,000 increase for that expenditure, bringing our total sustaining operations increase to $15.22 million, up from $4.61 million increase that we received last year. And again, the majority of that is the charter school impact. In total, when all of these expenses we've discussed are added together for the superintendent budget request, employee compensation is $42 million. Legislative impact for salaries is $4.18 million. The legislative impact for the benefit rate increases is $1.25 million, and sustaining operations is $15.22 million. This brings the county increase needed to $62.65 million. 62 point, yes. Thank you, 62.25. Okay, so turning from our local operating budget to our local capital outlay request, we are also requesting this year $10.2 million for annual capital maintenance funds. And you can see the breakdown here provides $2.9 million for our HVAC projects, $1 million for technology equipment replacement, $835,000 for maintenance equipment replacement, $2.3 million for roofing projects, $665,000 for activity bus replacement purchases, and $2.5 million for system-wide finishes like flooring. So now to look at the, the budget as a whole, we'll turn our attention to the state budget. And as we follow along with the state legislative activity and wait for the impact that the State Public School Fund and GCS, our recommended budget of $461,968,050 is based on the 23-24 planning allotment formulas provided by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. For the 23-24 school year, this state planning scenario allot's us funding for 67,768 students. The House of Representatives did recently provide their Appropriations Act proposal for the next two years. With the House of Representatives' budget proposal published on March 29, the actual year-over-year change in dollars directed to public schools in North Carolina is $91.4 million, an increase of 0.7%. However, little additional money is provided to school districts to increase resources. Most of the funding is directed toward changes in the salary and benefits. The House budget proposal leaves per pupil state support 0.3% below pre-recession levels, whereas the governor's more favorable budget would result in per pupil state funding at 12.3% above pre-recession levels. So while the Senate proposal is still under consideration, their ideas on the details of private school vouchers and tax cuts differ from the House. The House budget expands the voucher program, allowing older students to qualify for first-time voucher use, but maintains family income requirements, whereas proposed Senate Bill 406, even the wealthiest families in the state could receive taxpayer money to help with private school tuition and fees. Senate Bill 651 outlines deeper cuts to the personal income tax rate than those reflected in the House budget. Instead of appropriating new funds to support these additional vouchers, it appears funding currently supporting public school students will be shifted to cover the cost. The cost to educate existing public school students will certainly not be reduced as money is drained away from public education to provide vouchers to students who aren't currently included in the public school counts. For our local current expense fund, the recommended budget totals $311,64,573. This budget includes a request of the county commissioners for $307,461,149, which is an increase of $62.65 million or 25.6% of the current appropriation, which is 24, excuse me, $244,810,398. Also included in the current expense fund is $3 million in fines and forfeitures and a budget for interest earned on investments of $603,424. And all of those would make up our local current expense fund at $311 million. For the federal grants fund, we are using the 22-23 actual federal allotments plus an estimated carryover for a recommendation of $186,836. I'm sorry, I'm gonna round these next year. We're gonna create a budget that just has all zeros on the end. We don't yet have our 23-24 federal planning allotments from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And of course, revisions for actual carryover and allotments will be incorporated into the budget after those are available. All right. So, for the operating budget, the State Public School Fund, the local current expense fund, and the federal grants fund contain the revenue sources that we consider the GCS operating budget. And while state funding in North Carolina provides the largest percentage of operating revenue, the volume of federal funding has an impact on the next largest slice of the chart of the pie. We have seen that with S.R. We had explosion in federal money, that federal slice got bigger. So now, state revenues account for 48% of the proposed 23-24 operating budget, whereas local regains that second-largest percentage back at 32%, leaving federal to support 20% of the operating budget. And of course, for the current 22-23 year, in large part due to S.R. allocations, federal allocations make up 29% of our support, leaving 23 for the local support. Looking at how men, money is spent in the operating budget, the majority of the funding clearly supports our employees' compensation and related benefits shown here for 23-24 at 76%. Purchased services, such as contracted services, utilities, and insurance, account for another 11% of the operating budget. Supplies and materials are 9% of the operating budget, and pass-through of local funding accounts for 4% of the overall operating budget. State funding for charter schools does not flow through the local school districts and is in addition to the percentage reflected in our operating budget. From another expenditure budget perspective, 79% of the operating budget is slated for direct school expenditures. Support services are 7%, with transfers to charter schools and transportation services. and transportation services coming in at 4% each. Technology services, utilities, and maintenance support complete the operating budget at 2% each. So now to return to the full budget, as operating budget was state, local fund, and federal, when we look at our total budget for 2324, the state fund includes the 462 million included in the planning allotments provided by DPI. The local current expense fund, including the county appropriation, totals the 311 million. The federal fund projection based on current year allotments and estimated carryover is almost 187 million. The decrease from the prior year in federal funds, again, is primarily due to the ESER funding that's not being replenished. The capital fund request, as we discussed, is 10.2 million, and the School Nutrition Enterprise Fund recommendation for 2324 is 42,545,000. We are following legislative bills that include elimination of student meal debt, and while the local community in Guilford has responded tremendously, correct, with our donations regarding student meal debt this year, this issue has been experienced throughout the state, and the House proposed budget includes funding to cover student meal debt in 2324's school year. We'll keep an eye on all the bills impacting school nutrition and make any needed revisions at the appropriate time. The After-School Enrichment Enterprise Fund recommendation is 6.2 million in alignment with the action taken by the Board of Education on April 4th, and the Special Revenue Fund, where our grants and donations are housed, is currently projected to include a budget of 10.6 million. That brings the total recommended budget to 1,29473,351. So after today's budget work session, a public hearing will be held, and the Board of Education will provide a budget recommendation to the county manager to include in the requests to the commissioners. Then throughout May and June, commissioners will hold work sessions to review the budget and hold their own public hearing. The passage of the Guilford County budget, including the appropriation to Guilford County schools, is anticipated by June 15th. Even if the General Assembly is able to meet their deadline to pass the state budget prior to July 1st, we will plan to prepare a continuing budget resolution at the end of June based on the current year's spending for passage at our June 22 board of education meeting to allow operations to continue until DPI, the Public Instruction, is able to work through the process of calculating each school district's numbers and issue the 202324 allotments. So at this time, I will turn it back over to Dr. Oakley, and we will accept.
We're ready for questions.
Kim?
Thank you again for your presentation, and I agree with your zeros, as long as you're adding some. That would be great. I would like to know, how do you measure attrition rate in regard to staff? Where do you get your numbers from in in the attrition rate? Is it from DPI or the census?
Yeah, so all of those attrition rates come from the State of Teaching report that is published by the Department of Public Instruction.
Okay. Are the steps including part-time employees, does it work the same?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, great. In your budget request for the charter schools, that number is the number that we are requesting from the county for the charter schools, am I correct?
For every dollar we receive, well, for every dollar we receive for our students, a proportionate share must be passed through us to the charter schools. So they're not included in our salary study, they're not included in our mandated state legislative increases or our utility increases, but every time we receive funds, they have to receive a proportionate share based on their enrollment compared to ours.
So then that request is definitely a guaranteed, a request that must be fulfilled by the county, am I correct?
Yes.
So that's a non-negotiable?
For us to receive the 50 million that supports GCS in this budget request, we would need the additional 12 million to pass through to the charter schools.
So it's in addition to?
It's in addition to 50 million, it's part of the 62 million.
Right, so then we know that that's a guarantee for them to definitely get that funding, am I correct?
If we're fully funded at the superintendent's request.
Right, okay, okay.
It's the state's guess at how many kids will go to a charter school.
Right, no, I get that, but what I'm trying to connect is that they are definitely guaranteed their share of the funding.
They get, they get whatever the proportionate share is times the number of children in charter.
No, I get, I understand that, that part I get. In regard to when you said the 29% that we that increased our federal portion of our budget, and then you said then the local then became 23%. So was there some type of supplant there that we got less from the local because we got more from the federal?
No, it was just the influx of ESER funds that we have previously received. Now we're just spending the remainder of the ESER funds.
No, but you said the local prior was more than that 23%, am I correct?
The federal was a greater slice.
Right.
Last year. Moving forward, federal is going to decrease and local will increase because there's less federal funds.
Okay, I'll ask a different question. I want to know, have we asked for everything that is needed? Have we really painted the picture of what is needed for us to be successful in Guilford County? Because I do think that you have not because you ask not, and that if you never really painted the picture of what it really means and what the need really is, then the public doesn't really understand that. The county really doesn't understand that. So I just want to know, how truthful is this request for what we need in Guilford County to be successful?
I think you raised a good point, and we talked a lot about how now is not the time to underfund public education, and the needs are greater, and the poverty is growing. You know, we've talked a whole lot about that. I think it's why we showed the three different models, to be honest with you, in terms of compensation. We always know that this is a starting point in terms of of the negotiation process that happens to get us to where we need to be. If we ask, so no, I think this is a realistic first approach, and it's why we showed three different models. But in terms of the North Star or the sky, I mean, you know, think about how old our buildings are and what that would look like. And we're making us, you know, the voters have made a good effort at starting to handle that. But in the meantime, you know, the HVAC systems are failing, and we're trying to catch up from decades of underfunding. And so I think this is is the starting point for the negotiation, and it's why we showed the getting us what getting us above market value would would cost in terms of the employee compensation. You'll see that that's almost 78 million. So this is the beginning of the conversation.
In regard to the steps, is that something that needs to be approved by the state for us to do that?
No, the state has minimum and maximums that they allow. We develop our own step structure within those guidelines. So no, it would not be connected to the state.
Okay, was inflation built into this budget?
There is inflation for those state mandated and salary and benefit increases, as well as for things such as the utilities, insurance, the big-ticket items. However, there is not inflation built in for supplies and things of that nature.
Okay. I know we didn't talk about the pension spiking, but can you speak to that and how it impacts our budget? Just a little bit?
Me or you?
That's my last question, thank you.
So pension spiking is is an oft-litigated and still litigating topic, but the way that pension spiking works, as it is currently written in North Carolina, the last employer before someone retires is responsible for the difference between what they have paid into the retirement account effectively and what their retirement will be. And so you can have someone who was, for example, say they were a career, I was going to give you an example. Say you were a career teacher, and you worked for 25 years as a teacher, and at year 26, you were promoted to principal. Your salary would go up 20, 25,000 because of that promotion. When you retire, you're paid your best four years, which means you've paid into the retirement system as a teacher for 26 years, and then your best four years are going to be increased by a significant amount. So you will likely cause a pension spike, and your last employer, who you retire from, is going to get a bill for the difference between what you've paid in and that spike that could be 150,000. So it's very hard to budget for or plan for. It penalizes the last employer, even if the last employer wasn't necessarily where it spiked. It's a system that is very difficult to plan for and budget for.
Diane?
Okay, because these pages are not numbered out, this first one is where you have the Rhino Times. The question is, can you, can you explain what you mean by market? You know, and I hope you're not going to use Burger King again.
Yeah, I mean, when you have a market, like if you think about bus drivers, for example, you know, we have some bus drivers, you know, FedEx might have some, you know, the city might have some, and then, you know, there is a market rate that happens. So what we have seen, you know, what the debate has been for several years is, should there be a minimum wage? And with bus drivers, you know, it was 15, like, it was a pretty, you know, long-debated topic, but then when all these, you know, when we don't have enough bus drivers, then the rate, the market actually dries the rate up. So you might have gotten to 15%, but now actually the market rate is 20%, it's, I'm sorry, it's 20 dollars an hour. So you see districts like Chapel Hill, Carboro, they're setting a 20 dollar per hour rate. So now, you know, that's kind of where the markets are, you know, dictating what that rate is. And in Guilford County, you know, we, through the study, we found some, you know, we tried to identify what the market rate was to the best of our knowledge, but it's changing, and we have seen that across sectors after the pandemic. So when there are not enough plumbers to address the issues we're facing, then, you know, the rate is going to keep going up, and that's what we're facing.
So market rate is like the competitive pay? Is that what you're saying?
Basically, it's an average typically.
So if we're paying a CDO, which is a certified licensed driver, 15 dollars an hour, that same CDO trained person could possibly go to the city and make 20 dollars an hour?
Correct.
Or to the county. So so we're not keeping pace with what that particular job title or job requirements are paying across the board regardless of whether it's.
Correct.
Skilled or unskilled labor?
Correct. So that's what the superintendent's budget is trying to address is, you know, you have, the market has shifted after the pandemic, and what the study tried to do is to identify where, you know, our employees are to be to be competitive with market, and that's the same process the county follow, because they had the same challenges. So in that article that we highlighted, and there are several articles, this was just one that, you know, kind of was speaking to that point, but, you know, they align their rates, and they saw their vacancy rate drop because, you know, now they are competing with the market, or able to compete after they funded the compensation study.
Okay, how do other benefits weigh into that? Okay, so if we're paying, say, 17 dollars, the benefit package, are we competitive there, or are we able to be competitive? I mean, I know that, what, some of our classifieds only work, what, 10 months?
There's a whole range.
Yeah, so are we, have we looked at the the benefit package as a part of our competitiveness?
So in this particular study was a salary study, not not what we would call a compensation study. So the salary study only looked at monetary compensation, but not at at benefits or other non-monetary compensation.
Okay, do you need a study to tell you whether or not we have a decent benefit package?
So so we, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, yeah. Well, I think with ours, I mean, a lot of this dictated by the state. So we have state health plan, and a lot of our benefits are pretty well-defined for us. So I think that's why the choice was with the salary, and also to make sure first that we hit most market prices.
Okay, because I told you I would bring this up again, though I realize that it won't happen, you know, but in my mind, a part of our benefit package should be us at least trying to figure out a way to offer 50% at least pay of the family healthcare, which I think could really help a lot of our families that have dependents. If if 50% of that healthcare cost, which is my understanding averages somewhere between 800 and 1,000 a month, roughly, no, could, if we could, that would put that much money back into that employee's pocket to live off of, right? And and could potentially be a part of our benefit package, right?
I mean, this, if we did something in addition to what the state did, yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm just trying to figure out if if we can't reach whatever the highest is in the market value, then what other things can we offer that would make it desirable for an employee to either stay here or want to work for us? So that's why I'm asking, you know, didn't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Leclerc. Okay, my next question is the page that says by the numbers. Do we know if our homeless population is in a concentrated area of our school district, or is it all over?
It matches the county data, so we've been looking at that data closely through the the task force. I mean, we have higher pockets and the higher segregated areas of poverty that we have. We have large numbers in southeast Greensboro, but they range across zip codes. 27406 was the highest the last time we looked. But it changes too, like, because people are, you know, living with different families and changing circumstances all the time.
I made a suggestion, I think it was back in January, when the city was supposedly looking at trying to address some of the temporary housing for homeless, and I didn't feel like there was a lot of conversation about families. And I didn't know if, and I asked that we try to enter into that conversation because it does impact on us as far as our children are concerned. And since the city and the county are the two places that are in a position to either allocate or spearhead permanent or trying to help to generate permanent affordable or workforce housing, did we try to enter into that conversation?
Yeah, we're at the table. There's a homeless task force, and we have representation and have been at been at the table. We do define it differently. That's a little challenging. How homelessness is defined by the school district is different than how other entities define homeless. But there's data sharing agreements, and we're at the table in the conversation, and and how families are being supported is a part of the conversation.
Okay, well, I think it would be helpful if we could perhaps have a conversation with media outlets, because they do talk about us sometimes and sometimes not knowing exactly all the facts. It's like this week, one of our local stations was talking about the lunch program. It's like this week, one of our local stations was talking about the lunch program and they were wondering what we were doing. And so, you know, I, I felt like if they had had a little bit more information, they would know exactly what Ms. Jenkins and, you know, so I sent them the link to our donation page, but I, I just think that they're the ones who are putting out the information. So if there's a way for us to have some kind of meaningful conversation with them to say, okay, this is what this looks like for us. It's just a suggestion, okay? My next page is the page that says, local pupil appropriations. Can you explain how, as briefly as possible, how we come up with that? Or how they come up with that? Because we're, we're not the we.
Correct. So this does come from the North Carolina Public School Statistical Profile that is published and they will take the total amount of the county appropriation for any given year and they'll take the total number of average daily membership for that district calculated for the year. And the formulas just divide the number of students into the, the total dollars received for the county appropriation.
Okay, can you explain then how it is where Chapel Hill, I'm sure, which is a smaller school system than us, winds up with a much higher pupil appropriation?
Correct.
Can you explain that?
I can explain the formula and the numbers. I cannot necessarily explain the, the county dynamics for funding.
So whose problem is this page? Is it ours? Is it the county commissioners?
I mean, different things have happened. I think you'll remember Chapel Hill passed a tax specifically to address this problem. So different counties have done different things over time to, to put us where we are in terms of where we fall.
Okay, so do we need to figure out another way to bring our pupil appropriation up?
So, I mean, I think that's part of our ask to the, to the county that this size is doing exactly that, but we have had two failed attempts at sales tax increases. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there have been different strategies that the county has tried. I mean, the sales tax is, is one, you know, I think last time they tried was, you know, five cents for every $20 that you spend in Guilford County. So if you come to Tanger and CHO and you spend a certain amount, it's a fraction of that. And it was supposed to bring about $20 million in revenue to the county. And I think at a time where you had, you know, like new economic engines like Tanger, you know, it was an interesting opportunity to explore because they were driving a lot of people from outside the county that then they come and actually help you fund your public schools. But that has just not been successful in Guilford County. But Forsyth County, on the other hand, they, they pass a sales tax and they, you know, they share with the community that they were going to use it for teacher supplements, even though legally they cannot connect that on the ballot measure, but they, their county commissioners make that promise that they were going to connect it to teacher salaries and, you know, of course that passed. And that's where you see that, you know, Forsyth is moving up at a faster rate than we are.
Okay, just as an FYI, it's not that, it's about political will because we do have a hotel motel tax that is specifically for supporting the Coliseum and its related ventures like the Tanger Center. So that, you know, we can, if we have the political will, find a way to designate monies for specific things. So though I think perhaps the argument is that that is a economic generator, which it is, but having educated workers is also an economic generator because the better educated your workers are, i.e. through public school and through community college, the, the more desirable it is for companies to come here. So I, I'm just saying, maybe perhaps this is a discussion for another day, but I think as we've made the facilities ask, we need to also make the investment in public education ask too. And so my next question is probably tied into that, which is the teacher supplement. How do we, what, what needs to happen to get businesses to see this need? So I'm kind of, like you, you mentioned that we, right now Guilford County is on a roll in, in bringing in new business. I think yesterday they announced another aviation business that is, that the, that the city council, I think, yet last night, voted for and incented for them to come here. So how do we get at that table? Or is that the function of, of the county to say to these multi-billion dollar businesses that are coming here that we need them to support education more?
Yeah, I mean, there are examples across the country where, you know, let's say, you know, if American Airlines was moving into, next to the PTI airport, you know, as part of the negotiation, the course is that, you know, they might negotiate, maybe you will help us build an aviation high school right next to your company, which then, you know, frees resources that you don't have to use local dollars to build schools. So there are all sorts of partnerships that can happen with local businesses, with businesses moving in. I think we have had a very positive relationship with Toyota so far. We're in the process of collaborating to open a quote unquote, you know, Toyota Academy that would focus on career and technical education programs, but there hasn't been, you know, I think there is the will, but there hasn't been a cohesive strategy to have those conversations with businesses before they come in. And I think, you know, Dr. Oakley has done a good job at getting at those tables early and having those conversations, but it has not been part of the culture over the years.
Well, I can tell you that when the, if you will, the, the head hunters for these businesses, which is usually out of the chambers wheelhouse, begins putting down the list of things that the company is interested, education is in there. And they are asking, you know, about the quality of, of education as well as the trainability of, of workers and also specific training for whatever their business is. So all I'm saying is, is that we need to somehow or another step up how we wind up in that conversation if we can. Okay, all right, I'll try to hurry here. Okay, this is the page that says possible action steps. Is, is 30 years, I think I heard you say, is the so-called career, natural career progression? Is that realistic in 21st century? I don't think people stay on jobs before a hot minute. I mean, what I mean is, I, I don't see folks, I mean, even whenever we were looking at, not this superintendent, but previously, you know, the comment was made, oh, student center stays three to five years. That's a, a good run. So is this realistic?
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you mean. Would, would we keep a particular employee for 30 years? Yes, that is less and less likely. What it does allow us to do though is to hire in mid-career professionals at a market rate. So even if they were with us for a shorter period of time or they come to us with 15 years or 20 years of experience, we would be able to offer them a rate that would be competitive for that, that level of experience. That would be our, our hope with that. We're currently, we're not able to do that. There's no, as we're looking at that graph, if you're on grade 54, if you're a teacher assistant, if you have 30 years of experience or if you have no years of experience, you're receiving the same wage. So it's, it's much more difficult to recruit somebody who is bringing experience to the district. So this, that would be an advantage of the, of the 30 steps.
Okay, is it part of our practice to look at how much we invest in an employee at the beginning and then, I guess, like I guess you do with a, a, a car, you depreciate it out over how, how long do you get the payback?
Return on investment.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay.
Absolutely.
That might be a better way.
Absolutely. So that is the other side of the coin is if we're able to recruit that mid-career professional in this case, are we going to be able to retain that mid-career professional so that as they become more familiar with the culture of our district, the operations of our district, and they become more efficient in what they're doing? Obviously, we're investing resources in them and we want to be able to retain that employee so we're able to see the fruit of that investment. So our hope is also that this would lead to greater retention of employees as well.
Okay, on the funding model, and I think this question was asked, but I'll, I'll ask it again and if it has been, will, will this model, will the model selected give us any flexibility for the future? I think Ms. Erby asked a similar question about, do we, have you considered inflation or, or that if the market today, you're saying that the market today might be X, will it, if, if in five years that then is, you know, was after X, Y, then?
The model will work to adjust. The funding may not be there. So like, that's why, I mean, and it was mentioned a little bit before, but how we budget and how we treat our employees directly impacts the lives of kids in school. And like, and so how we, what we say we value needs to be reflected in our budget here. And the model does adjust because it would, when it names the differences between the grades and the steps, that's fixing what's broken. Now, getting the funding to support the model is, is an additional challenge that will take additional advocacy efforts, but the model itself, yes, is the answer to your question.
Okay, do you think, how many years do you think you would need that funding to fix that model, just a one-time shot or over a period of years?
It's going to take, it's going to take a period of years to be able to, to do this because we haven't done it for so long and so it's crawling out of a hole, so to speak, but also chasing the market, right? So like, if you think about the unemployment rate and how it's just hard to get workers now, I don't know, like, there's different restaurants that have switched to not having waitstaff anymore, you know, you have to go because there's just not the employees there. So I think we're going to be chasing the market. That's just part of how the organizations work, but I, the model itself does adjust for inflation, et cetera, because of how it's, it's built.
Okay, I've got three more questions, I'll be done. And this is the legislative impact and I don't really want to answer, I just want us to think about what do we do to reduce the load on our employees? If you were saying that it's going to take, what, 50, 51% of a salary? Is that what you said?
Yes, for an employee that makes $45,000 a year, we're going to have to spend 50, another 50% of that $45,000 to pay for their health insurance, the employer portion of their health insurance, the employer portion of their retirement, as well as the FICA taxes that are...
Okay, so that doesn't come out of their pocket?
No.
Oh, good.
That's us, that's in it. They're paying as well for those items.
Okay, but not, okay, well, that makes me a little bit more comfortable with that one. Okay, then on deferred maintenance or capital outlet, how much of this is for schools that are on the bond list? How much of, or do you, have you designated or is this going to be when roofs fall in?
This is in addition to, so we're currently working on the prioritized plan for the $363 million that's in the bond. This, there's, there's enough projects for all of it and just trying to prioritize based on work orders, what's breaking the most frequently, what's impacting the day-to-day operations of the school. So we wouldn't be taking from one to pay the other. There's more than enough capital needs to be able to prioritize list in both places and spend it accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Then my last question has to do with ACES. Do, do you anticipate a drop in participation because of the increase? And if so, because, okay, because the six...
The six million.
Six million is based on X number of families participate?
Right now, what our, what our enrollment looks like. We don't anticipate it, but we're letting families know now so that we can plan for the fall.
Okay, if, considering this is the enterprise fund, if they're, if they don't meet this, what's the plan to, to drop programs?
We would have to cut the smaller programs because of the nature of the fund. But I mean, I think when we look around, our rate is very competitive. So we're hopeful that we'll maintain and you can even look at expansion if the, if we have interest in enrollment, which is why we told people about the fee update as soon as it occurred so we can plan for, for the enrollment in the fall.
Okay, has there ever been or is, is there a possibility of any type of grant supplement for this enterprise fund or because it's an enterprise fund, it can't get, or is there anything out there for after-school program grant funding?
Not typically for school systems, just because it's not our core business, right? Frequently, there's community organization like the Y could apply and ask us to be a partner, but I, I haven't seen lots of examples for school system-based funding. Also because it's recurring, you know, it's just like using a one-time thing for a raise. It's not helpful when the, the term expires.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very helpful for me. I think, Jose, I'd like to get into, not here, into more details on the pay and the benefits we provide, so we do that offline. A couple of things, a lot of talk about Toyota. I've been to the Toyota plant in Georgetown and studied them quite a bit and talked to the executives here. Their planning, their attrition rate in their plant is less than 1% for 7,000 employees. So I asked them, what, how did that, how does that happen? That you keep that many people for that long? And they said, well, we provide daycare, after-school care, senior care, we have a hospital, we provide all the benefits that we think they need and we pay 50% over the average salary that's in the area. So when you're going against that competition, and we're going to be in that shortly, I think it behooves us to partner with them and say, you're putting us at a disadvantage. We're, we're happy you're here, but you need to kind of step up and help us. So if you look at these vacancy rates that you have for HVAC and plumbing and electrical and technology, I think one of the things maybe we should be able to sit down with their executives and say, when you do your schooling, can we send some of our people to be trained? Can we get some people, because I think these, these positions are trainable. So if you have someone that is, has some aptitude that wants to learn it, maybe they can fund it. The other question I had is inflation for supplies. I, I heard you didn't have that built in. Do you, I don't need the number now, but maybe later on we can get that number. And the last thing is, do we have an endowment for the school systems?
Not for Guilford, Guilford County schools does not.
Is that something we legally can do?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
That's okay. The, can, can the school system develop an endowment so that people that want to put money in for, for future can do that?
We, we are only allowed to do the things that we're statutorily granted authority to do and I have not researched that question. There are certainly nonprofit support arm organizations that do things like that. For example, there's a school community foundation kind of thing. There are offshoots of other entities that do that kind of thing and then donate to schools, but schools directly holding money is probably not appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of my questions.
Alan?
Yes, thank you all for the work that went into this, this budget and this presentation, for the clarity of it. To me, perhaps the centerpiece are these funding models, A, B, and C. And I, I think, again, how it's outlined is, is very clear, but I'm interested, given three models, what went into choosing Model A? I'm interested in hearing more about that. I think all of us here and certainly all of you and you, Dr. Oakley, can all speak to and affirm the vital role that's played by our classified staff, that they are the front lines for our kids and for our teachers as well. I don't claim any high ground in knowing that better than... I don't claim any high ground in knowing that better than anyone else here today, but I do know what it means to my kids to have an office worker, an office support staff, administrative staff who's skilled not only in handling all of the organization necessary for the school, but also in relating to them and connecting them to places where their needs can be met. I know what it means to have a nutrition worker greet them in the morning. I know that those are people often poised to help our kids in times of significant challenge and need. And so I'm just interested, given that we all know that, what went into choosing Model A rather than Model, particularly than Model B? There's a big difference between Model A and Model C. We're talking actually double the amount requested, but between Model A and B, I'm seeing only a $4.6 million difference and wondering, given all that we have to prioritize in a billion-dollar budget, what led us to choose Model A for this budget rather than Model B?
I can tell you that there were way more than three models to start. So there's that. But, you know, also, when we're thinking about how we're funded and what our neighboring entities have done recently, we're trying to be in the same, I mean, we're, we can compare where we are. It's in a different place than the Greensboro Police Department and the county because they've gotten to market and will always be chasing market, but the, this is a fine line, right? Like, because we have to have a starting point for the conversation. And so we base the starting point for the conversation based on what other government agencies and community entities that are close to us have done in the past 12 months. And that's, that's how we arrived there. We can certainly take the 40, add, you know, we can certainly go for, go for more, but we, the conversation around matching market to make us competitive with organizations like ours is how we landed there.
I would advocate that we do go for more and that we do seek to pass a budget that includes Model B, and that we take this moment to be a bit more aspirational and also reach a goal that is still attainable and realistic in that it is a less than 1% increase on a billion-dollar budget.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you all so much for pulling all of this together. This is a ton of information. My first question is about the attrition rates, just kind of following up on a previous question. I understand those rates come from DPI, is what you said. Do you have any idea how those are calculated? I spent a lot of time over the past year and a half or so looking at the personnel reports that are generated each month and kind of doing rough calculations of where we are. And the numbers that I've seen don't seem to align with these numbers. I'm just curious how they figure that out.
So I can give you a rough model for it. There's a lot of ins and outs, and we can share the state of teaching. They do a really nice job with the business rules. But in order to be included, there's, it has a lot to do with what budget code somebody's on. So basically, one has to be a teacher, which means there are certain designations of what that, what a teacher would be. So we would think of classroom teachers, though, if we want to simplify it. And they'll take a snapshot in March of one year and then compare that same group to March of the following year. So it's almost like a survival study. So how many of those teachers who were on payroll in March of 2022, for example, continued to be on payroll in March of 2023? That's the state's methodology. So as you can imagine, there could be situations that aren't picked up using, using that methodology.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Yeah, because, of course, anecdotal conversations as well of, you know, people are leaving in droves to go to other counties, and that just doesn't seem quite to align with what's here. Sorry, I gotta find my notes. This is a silly little question, but talking about the grades, you mentioned that we currently have 30 grades, but then the charts that we looked at after that refers to grades 54 to 60. Can I just assume we don't necessarily start at one with how the grades go? Just wanted to be sure.
We start at 54, oddly enough, and this is, again, the state structure. I don't know why, but it does start at grade 54. Now, we actually do have a grade 55. I didn't include it because there's only eight employees on that grade. And we also just took a snapshot. It goes up to grade 82, and there's some that aren't used. But yeah, so that's, that's why, there's no grade one.
I just wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something super obvious. And then I think it would be nice to be able to see a list of those current 30 grades compared to what the new recommended grades are gonna be, you know, reducing the number of those.
Do you mean, and what positions fall there?
Yeah, just to have an idea of where those land.
So the list of current compared to proposed?
Yep. And then... I think I only have one more, hold on, just have to find it. On the local current expense fund page, what are the, what's the $3 million of fines and forfeitures that's on there?
So interestingly, our constitution provides that all fines and forfeitures in the state of North Carolina are the property of the local public schools. That was one of the original 1970 concepts of funding the public schools. So every time someone gets a traffic ticket, but most of us think about it as traffic tickets. And for those of you experienced board members, you'll remember that we've been litigating what is a fine or forfeiture for many, many years, including the fact that if you get a citation with a red light camera, that is in fact a fine and forfeiture, and that is the property of the school system. We got $6 million over that litigation. There are environmental fines, there are tax penalties, there are all kinds of different fines and forfeitures that are collected. And those, those collected within your county stay within your county and become the property of the public schools. Also, almost every criminal or traffic matter has a fine in it somewhere that, and that fund also goes. And then forfeitures means every time someone gets arrested, in order to avoid going straight to jail to make sure they show up in court, so you'll hear that Joe Schmo killed five people and his bond was set at $5 million. And what that means is in order for Joe Schmo not to just sit in jail until his trial, he posts a sum of money to assure that he shows up for his trial. If Joe Schmo doesn't come to court on the day of his trial, that $5 million is forfeited. So that's what forfeitures mean. So every criminal appearance bond where a person doesn't show up to court gets forfeited, and that also becomes the property of the public school. So those are the two pieces, there's fines and there's forfeitures. It's hard to budget, as Tara will tell you, because you don't know from year to year. You can have a huge drug bust and there's big time money and everybody flees to Mexico, and all that money becomes the property of the school system, and then the next year it isn't. So, you know, fines and forfeitures do fluctuate, but there's a certain predictability over time.
Great, thank you. And I love the focus in this budget proposal of really making sure that we're taking care of our teachers and staff. You know, without them, we have, we have nothing to be able to educate our kids. And so I'm really glad that that's being prioritized and that it's not just teachers and administrators, but that we're also looking at the classified staff who are really the heartbeat of a lot of our schools. I would also really like to advocate for us to take a look at the athletic staff. You know, I sent you a request about that. But looking at what our athletic directors are paid and what our coaches are paid in comparison to our neighboring counties, there is a drastic, drastic difference, and it is not a good difference. So I would love to look at that. I know it's been a long time since they've had increases and see if that might be something that we can work into this. And then my final statement, I agree very much with Board Member Charouse about, you know, I think we should be trying to go for Recommendation B here, but I do have the concern, and I'm not sure that there's any way around this, with the fact that the money that we're asking for from commissioners is supposed to be for facilities. And of course, our focus here is really trying to support staff, and I'm, I'm just not sure how that's gonna go over, but I do think that it's important for us to advocate for as much as possible for our staff.
You know, one, and thank you, one important thing to keep in mind is that, you know, every community gets to decide what type of community they want to be and where they want to spend resources. Of course, when you look at some of these charts, you know, some communities have decided that they want to spend a certain amount of dollars going into schools. And really, you know, we keep talking about it, but strong schools make strong communities. And I think that, you know, the county will have to take that into account. And of course, this budget was driven by what we heard from the community. I mean, a lot of these classified staff really are frontline workers, you know, people who help us open schools, you know, who make sure that, you know, all the public health guidelines were followed. Some of these people were delivering food at the peak of the pandemic when, you know, job losses were at the peak. So I think you have elevated an important question, which is, you know, what community do we want to be and what resources we can invest to become the best community we can be?
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you very much for a great presentation, and I promise you I would not talk about Lunch Step today because we'll be here until 5 o'clock, so I will hold it to the next meeting, okay? I do think that we need to start getting around the table, the roundtable, when we talk about funding and giving money as far as education. Sometime we are invited to those tables and sometime we are not. So I think it's about time for us now to start inviting ourselves to the table and have a part of that, to make sure that our children are getting the necessary things that they need and our teachers and staff. As far as the 30 steps that you mentioned, that makes a whole lot more sense than the picture some steps because just getting a raise at 17 years of service or 18 years of service causes you to want to leave and go to another position or to another employment. Now, the elephant in the room, the difference that I see in Model A and Model B for the funded model is just a 5% difference, or the 6% difference in the grade. Is there something different that I don't see? Tara? Okay, so depending on what you want for the district, what you want for the staff, what you want for the students, but I will say, a closed mouth doesn't get fed. So if you see something that you want for our kids, I think we need to go with a model that will give us some of the tools that we need for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, thank you for this presentation and the fact that it is really centered on people, and those people impact children, which is the business that we're in. This isn't a manufacturing plant, it's a school system, and we're here to support and educate our students. I've said this for years, but I really think we probably need to take some step towards some analysis around, we're a major employer here, usually the major employer in this city, in this county. And Michael, you were saying earlier that one of the sort of funding models, I think C would include 3,900 non-licensed personnel, right? And so, and because of the, because of the, the pay issues that we've had or the support issues that we've had with our staff, that we get further and further behind. And the county provides a lot of benefits, you know, the food and nutrition, the adult and child Medicaid, TANF, emergency or utility assistance. And so I can imagine our employees qualify for a lot of those programs. And if, and especially because of the salaries, I know, and I don't think this was a North Carolina study or analysis, I think it, North Carolina was included in the general accounting office that looked at taxpayers are supplementing the workforce of McDonald's, Food Lion, and Walmart, and I'm sure, you know, Guilford County. And so what is, what are those numbers? We have enough, we have, I think the numbers are large enough that we should be able to get some idea of how much of our workforce has to then turn around and rely on the county for all of those benefits because of their salary. I mean, it's just kind of insane that we are paying for it anyway. And why not put it in people's hands? Because, because I do think that they, the majority of people who are, who receive supplemental nutritional assistance, the SNAP, the food stamps, the food and nutrition services, work. And, you know, some of those other myths that, you know, around sort of food stamp fraud and things like that, I mean, it was, I think also in that report, that there was only $500,000 in fraud that was discovered compared to $330 billion in construction fraud. So that's not, you know, where we should be putting our focus and attention. But I just think I would want to support Model C because I think we have, I think, and Jose, I think to what you said, what kind of community will you want to be? And then the community impact, because students who graduate from high school, just having a high school diploma decreases the likelihood of coming in contact with law enforcement, increases higher wages on your job, increases better housing option, increases better health. I mean, all of those things are tangible benefits to our overall community. And so, and I know that the state has passed the buck, and I know that the county supports public education, and this is where we are. But I do think that, and I'm, I'm not sure what we can get done, I think we should ask for and do whatever it is that we can, and I know that you are, and we'll do that and encourage the community and our constituents to do that as well. And I think we have to do that analysis here to find out what's it really costing us not to pay people? What's it costing the county? Because I think that information would be really, really startling to us to have.
Madam Chair?
Do we want to have a motion to approve this at this point, or do we want to wait?
We have to have the public hearing, so we have to vote on May 9.
So you don't want us to?
We wouldn't want to not do the public hearing.
Right. The public hearing is required by law.
So Dr. Oakley is getting ready to walk us through the budget process and the next steps.
Thank you. So yes, so we will hold the public hearing on May 9, and that's when the board would adopt the budget request. That meeting is in High Point, so we will be in High Point for that. And then at, by May 15 is when we have to submit our budget request to the commissioners. They tentatively would, the county manager would present their budget to the commissioners May 18, followed by a work session in May, and then their public hearing June 1. And then they, the county commissioners would adopt their budget ordinance on the June 15 board meeting, followed by, if we have to pass the interim budget resolution, that would happen on June 22. So that's the order of events from now until the end of June. And the interim, of course, is if we're not able to have the state budget passed.
And it's fair to say that in the 30-plus years I have done this, the state budget has never been passed, so you will be having an interim.
Thank you. Is there no other questions, though? Are you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is there a way for us to send all of those emails that we've gotten to the county? You know, just kind of send them all at one time?
There is shift and forward.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir, second? Oh, I did, I did, I'm sorry. Bill?
Yes. I'd like the board to, and I'd certainly like to have a reconsideration of the resolution to support equitable and inclusion in education. And the reason I'm asking for this is, I read House Bill 187, and I've read our motion, and at the bottom of our resolution, it says, "In further resolve, the Guilford County Board of Education urges the members of North Carolina..." urges the members of North Carolina General Assembly to oppose House Bill 187." So, I've spent some time reading House Bill 187, which I hadn't before. And in the process, I've noticed some interesting things. The title of our resolution is a resolution to support equitable and inclusion education. The title of House Bill 187 is Equality in Education. They're talking about the same thing. The, you know, when I read it, read both of them, they're very similar. So, I think they go hand in hand. So, to oppose it, I, I would like to reconsider my vote and vote no on our resolution unless we can take out that final clause.
So, the first motion is a motion to bring up the vote for reconsideration?
Right. The first motion is to reconsider. That vote must pass by a majority. And then, yeah, there has not yet been a second.
So, is there a second?
All right.
All right. Please use your devices to vote, so we'll have a record.
I keep giving her a K instead of a C.
Can you clarify, I'm sorry, can you clarify what we're voting on?
We're voting on just to bring up the, the motion.
Just to allow the reconsideration, yes.
Just want to be sure.
Right. Yeah, it looks like you're missing somebody. Is that right? One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, that's right.
All right, that passes by a vote of seven to one. So, now, do we have that motion, Jill? Or the, do we need to just recite the bill again, recite the motion passing the resolution for?
Yeah, I don't have that information here.
Or the, the motion.
Right. So, Bill, your, the motion was to approve the resolution, I believe. Was there any amendment to it? I don't think there was.
No.
All right, so the motion was to approve the resolution? So, if somebody would like to make that motion, all right?
I make a motion that we approve our resolution.
Second?
Second.
All right, please use your devices to vote. Okay, all right, so I'll just go by. All right. Kim?
Yes.
Bill? Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Chrissy?
No.
Diane? And Deana, yes. That passes by a vote of five to three. All right, there was a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, everyone.